From Management Advisory Group International in considering necessary action regarding the studies. We sent you all the compounded, or the compression, so that you could take a look at it. Basically, in our last discussion, we stated that we would have, that this would be a multiple step process. So, in our last meeting, we talked about what the minimum was, bringing everybody up to minimum. We sent out the plan for the compression to everybody, to all the elected officials, so that you could take a look at it. And we did two compressions. We did an adjustment, which was option number one, and that was a compression for people that had been with the county for 17 years or more. And that was kind of a natural break that was within the budget that we had set ourselves. And then we sent you one for adjustment, option number two, which was in the orange. And again, that was kind of a natural break, and that was for people that had been in the same position for 14, for 15 years or more. We also had a request to completely toss out the study completely and go to a 2.5% across the board, and then just give additional monies to the Sheriff's Department only. So, if you look at the 2.5, we currently have employees that basically make about $18,000 a year. So, if we go to a 2.5 increase, then they would receive $450 total, even though we know some of them are at below market value. So, we can implement one of the compressions, we can look at the other option. But obviously, one of the things that has come out of this study is that obviously, we need to modify or review our merit system. The other thing that we need to consider that was brought up during the study is for us to evaluate any new positions that the court wishes to consider to add. We had a request for one new position, which was Assistant to the County Commissioners, but we did not ask other elected officials if they had, you know, positions that they would like to consider adding to our current county list of available jobs, job descriptions. And so, we would have to review that and get job descriptions and place them in the pay scale. So, what's the Court's pleasure?
When we started looking at this, we didn't know there was a first draft, because none of the commissioners that I'm aware of got to see the first draft. We don't know what was in it, what was taken out, what was added. And I've sent an open records request to the company saying, "I would like to see those documents." And I've been refused so far at this date. So, until I get to look at those documents and review the implementation details, I'm gonna make a motion that we table this.
If we table it, then we will not be able to include it in the budget, which basically means that nobody will get anything.
No, it doesn't. We can appropriate the money, which is already, you set the limit yourself, without asking any of us, at five, over $500,000.
Whoa, 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 whoa. I said the amount of money that the budget could handle.
That's correct.
I did not ask, because there was nothing to ask. That's how much money we have available.
So, that money is in there.
Yes, sir, it is.
If we decide to give raises without this, we can still do it. We've got, can always amend the budget during the middle of the year.
So, we wish to start without a balanced budget, potentially?
It's happened before.
Well, I don't think that's wise, and I think it's very poor management.
Well, I think it's poor management, that we didn't have as much input as we should have starting out this. You're the only one on this court that got to see the first draft, and you made the changes in your office, and this thing does nothing, nothing for law enforcement. These guys, we're losing them by the droves. And if we don't do something with their salaries and get them up, we're never going to have the top law enforcement agency around this area.
Okay, so Commissioner Willis, using your logic, what you and the sheriff have devised, is that everybody else would get a 2.5% increase. Can someone open that door? It has to stay open. Thank you, Mark. And then the Sheriff's Department would get $150,000 to do with as they saw fit.
On salaries.
On salaries.
That's right.
Well, at this point in time, we have 13 lieutenants, captains, sergeants, and we have 13 deputies in the Sheriff's Department, plus we have telecommunications operators. We are losing employees everywhere, not just in the Sheriff's Department. We are losing employees everywhere. If we take care of only one group of employees, then that's extremely poor management across the board. We need to take care of the entire organization.
Well, this certainly doesn't do that. And if we can't afford to take care of them all in one year, we'll just have to do some next year and the year after.
And that would be the plan. The whole plan would be that we compress to the adjustment option, where you all decide. If we compress to 17 years or more, there are a lot of people in the Sheriff's Department that get impacted. And there are a lot of people in other areas that also get impacted, that also deserve more money. Now, if we do the 17 years, the compression for 17 years this time, and then we do another compression next year, then we will be getting as equitable as we can possibly get.
Well, I don't know about the compression, but I do know that.
Well, the numbers are right there in front of you. I sent it to you.
The Sheriff's Department needs more money. And that last draft that you sent out Friday afternoon does not do anything for our Sheriff's Department. It doesn't do near enough.
Well, it doesn't do near enough for anybody. It doesn't do near enough for anybody, right now.
Let's just correct it one at a time, if we have to go through each department every year. We can do that.
Well, we will certainly lose people everywhere else.
You're not gonna lose them like you're doing out of the SO.
We're not losing any more out of the SO than we are anyplace else, Commissioner Willis.
Well, you're not losing any out of Roanoke Bridge.
Well, that's because they are better compensated than those of us that are in the general fund.
Well, the plan should have been to look at those salaries in a different manner than this.
How's that? We asked experts in the market to evaluate us across the board. We asked them to evaluate every department and every employee. This was the process. We did not participate in the interviews. Every employee received the opportunity to fill out an evaluation stating what they did, what their daily operations were. Then these experts took it and compared it to what other entities or other agencies with that same job description do. And then they decided what the range was compared to our area and compared to other agencies and entities. And we are losing employees for all kinds of things. I read them.
You're calling us firm experts.
Well, yes, sir. That's what they do.
You know, when you go to their website, their phone number and their fax number have been disconnected.
No, sir.
That is correct.
They have not been. We have received multiple, multiple requests from them.
You have.
No, every employee in every department has.
Every single one?
Yes, sir. Every employee was asked to fill out a job survey and a job question.
And we all did that, but we don't know how it was used, because I can't get the information on the first draft.
Well, they're not gonna give you information on how they proceed within their own operations.
I'm not asking for that. I want to see the first draft to see what they came out with. Then we'll compare it to the second draft and see what was changed.
What do you want to do, Commissioner Willis?
I want to take.
Do you want to take care of all the employees, or do you want to just take care of the Sheriff's Department?
I want to table this till I get some answers.
Does anybody else wish to table this? How will we benefit by tabling it? Other than we're gonna drag out the budget, now you're saying you don't mind starting without a balanced budget? I have a problem with that.
I have a problem with rushing into something that I haven't even seen the information on.
We've been working on this for months.
You have.
No, sir. Everybody has. Everybody has.
What did you do with the first draft?
I didn't do anything with the first draft. We went through it, and there were.
Who is "we"?
There were all of us, us and the group.
When did we see the first draft?
No, we did not see a first draft. They sent us everything, and then we went through, and they had, there were jobs in there that we didn't even have.
Wouldn't that be a first draft?
And so, we corrected every error.
Wouldn't that been a first draft?
Yes, sir. And if you want it, you know what? Send me the request. There's no reason for you to afford a request for, to an entity or agency.
See what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna send you one, and I'm gonna send one to the company, and we're gonna compare it.
Well, that'll be fine.
Okay.
That's not a problem. Now, are you all going to reject allowing other employees to receive a salary raise, or are we gonna just take care of the Sheriff's Department?
Let me tell you something else while you're on the subject. I've got a letter here from an attorney out of Lufkin who reviewed this final study. He's an expert in HR, been handling it for years. His name is Scott Skelton, and he's also president of the Lufkin School Board. And he has gone through and has named numerous mistakes and bad things that are in that first draft, in that second draft.
So, Mr. Willis, instead of sending us that for everybody on the court to consider it ahead of time, you just held it.
I didn't get the letter till the 2nd of August.
And today's the 14th.
I'd sure be glad to give you a copy, because it's got a point in there that's potentially legally liable if we pass this thing as it is today. There's gotta be some changes. My suggestion would be we table this to the next meeting and get these details worked out.
And that's fine. We sent you that right there, for you to look at it, so you could take it under consideration and you could decide how you wish to proceed.
I'd decide.
But you've decided, you and the sheriff have sat down and decided, that everybody else is gonna get a 2.5% across-the-board increase, and then basically, the Sheriff's Department is gonna get $150,000. So, if you take an employee that is not at the Sheriff's Department, and they're making $30,000, you're gonna tell them that you're gonna give them $750,000 and call it good, even if we know that they're underpaid for their position? That's.
Well, do you want to try to fix all these underpays in one year?
I already said we can't afford to do that.
Okay.
We already said, when we looked at the first one, that it would be 1.2, 1.3 million dollars. We can't fix them all.
Let's take the department at a time. We can do some next year.
I don't, I don't think that's fair, and I don't think that's good management either. I think that what you should do is you should go through, and you should evaluate how long they've been with this county, or how long they've been in that position, and you should do something across the board. I don't think you can pick and choose.
I think you can get these questions answered, and that will give the Court.
Well, go ahead. Get them answered.
Well, we'll have to write that company.
Well, fine. Do you want to do it, or do you want me to do it?
I'll be happy to do it.
That's fine. You contact.
My motion still stands. I make a motion, we table this to the next meeting.
That is up to the Court.
I was seconding that motion, because I'd like for everybody just to get this thing calmed down, everybody to understand what the hell it is and to be done with it.
Okay, what questions?
I mean, I've heard enough from everybody about this thing. You know, the employees aren't happy with it. I mean, far as I'm concerned, I'd just love to just throw it away and just, you know, everybody be done. But I've heard enough. I'd like to table it one time. Everybody get their information and bring it up here next time, and let's be done with this. I mean, I'm tired of it. None of the employees appreciate that we went out trying to get them a raise. Everybody's against it. But, so, everybody get their stuff together, next time, just come in here and let's get it over with.
Well, I don't think you're gonna get it together with people, with department heads having an attitude that they're worried about their department only and nobody else.
Well, that's.
That's my problem with it. You know, when you go in and they call, and you visit with them, and it's all me, 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 not every employee in the county is me, me, me. I got a problem with that.
Yeah, but I, I mean, oh.
It's confusing to the employees, I understand that.
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, when you, when you get that thrown at you numerous times, I have a problem with that. I'd go with the 17. You know, y'all don't got a motion, and we'll see how it goes, but one don't need any more than the other.
No.
Okay, so.
I just assume, throw it away and just do a 2.5% across the board.
The compression will help start taking care of the different offices.
Absolutely. What the compression does is it takes care of every office. If you all looked at it, on the compression, if you look at the one for 17 years, and I have had some elected officials tell me they would like to go with 17 years. And I understand it, because basically, what the 17-year does is if you have, if you have an employee that has worked their way up through the ranks, right, then they're gonna get rewarded for the 17 years, right? If they're 15 years at the same position, well, then they have longevity in that position. Okay, so that's the difference. So, if you look at the 17-year compression, if you look at the proposed with compression adjustment, then the total amount, or the average, okay, the average that we would increase would be 5.67% across the board, which would be an increase in our payroll, okay, of $535,444. Under that option, under that option, then the adjustment to the Sheriff's Department and to the jail would be around a total of $200,000. Now, that's the SO and the jail. And I gave you all that information.
Yeah, we just, nobody's happy with it. I just assume just do a 2.5% straight across the board, and nobody gets nothing back. I'm tired of hearing that.
You won't make that as a motion?
Yep.
And I retract mine.
You're gonna retract the tabling, and you're gonna go to 2.5%?
Yep.
You're not gonna come back for, to table and discuss it next time?
Well, if y'all want to, I don't care. I'm just, I'm, yeah, we can come back and discuss it next time if y'all want to.
Okay, I put my motion back on the table.
All right, whatever.
Motion to table.
Can we not put $535,000 in there for the budget purpose?
No, we'll leave the 550 in there for budget purposes.
It's already there.
But if we go to 2.5% across the board, well, then that number's definitely gonna go down.
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of saving the county money, it's too bad, but if we're, in terms of saving the county money, we'd be saving the county money. But those people that are way below market, that had a, say, a 10% adjustment, which is like the telecommunications operators, 2.5% is one-fourth of what they originally recommended for. Okay.
We went through this process before in the past, and we didn't have this problem. I mean, everybody was happy to get what they got. Now, it's like it's never enough.
Yeah.
Well, we, I mean, not everybody's unhappy with it.
I know it. I know it.
There's no.
Okay, so we have a motion to table from Commissioner Willis, second by Commissioner Purvis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Well, motion carries. Okay, new business, your consent agenda. You have an addendum on B and the amount of $59,840.22. Is there anything on there that you all wish to pull off? Item aye.
Approve all but aye. Motion approve all but aye.
Say it.
Motion Commissioner Overstreet, second Commissioner Willis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
What about aye?
Oops, excuse me, aye.
I'd like to ask that we table it, so I can revisit with the party chairs, because some of the judges and alternates that they have on there, I need to verify, get a little bit more research from them on that and from their voter registration list.
Sounds good. Motion Commissioner Willis, second, Mr. Vincent. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item number six, consider approval of personnel matters as follows. Those are all listed in your PAS, Review and Consideration of Personnel Action Form, requested, request submitted since the last meeting, a review of any authorized emergency hiring. You have one emergency rehire and one emergency reclassification, and both of them are in the Sheriff's Office.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Willis.
Second.
Second Commissioner Vincent. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consider requests for revisions and/or amendments to the budget as follows. FY 2018 budget revisions and amendments as presented by the County Auditor's Office. A copy of that was also placed in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Overstreet, second Commissioner Purvis. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number eight, consider approval of offers to purchase tax-courced properties as follows. Commissioner Willis, you have several?
Sell.
Commissioner Vincent, you have several?
Sell.
Commissioner Overstreet, you have several?
Sell.
Okay, can I place that as a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Overstreet.
I'll move.
Second.
Sell.
Commissioner Willis, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number nine, review and approve county investment policy as presented by the county treasurer. A copy of that is included for your review.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Willis.
Second.
Second Commissioner Purvis. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 10, we've already done. Item number 11, approve contract between Polk County and NewStar for the county's DNS hosting, which is a website and email management. TAC notified us that the hosting of CERO, which is our county-wide website and email, Texas Regional Hostmaster, was acquired by NewStar, and NewStar is requiring everybody to complete new forms to bring us onboard and keep the domain active.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Vincent, second Commissioner Overstreet.
Do you have any authority to sign off on that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, consider request from Commissioner Willis for reconsideration of the lease renewal between Polk County and Man Eye Center that was approved on July 10, 2018. As you will recall, on July 10, we approved the renewal for Man Eye for the Regional Health Center, which at the rate of $1.40 per square foot per month. And last year, we agreed that we had rent space for profit at market rate. We have a representative from Man Eye Center here, and so we will let him speak.
Good morning.
Good morning.
May I hand this out to?
Yes, sir.
Right. Okay. Thanks, sir. Mm-hmm. Good morning, ma'am. It's Rand Turner. I'm here on behalf of the Man Eye Clinic and Charlene Smith, who has occupied this space, I understand, for some 30 years. And recently, we've received notice from the county increasing the rent from the current rate of $875 to $4,900 a month. So, I drove around and checked in a few things and wanted to share them with the Court and possibly offer some perspective to rates. There's no disagreement that $1.40 could be argued to be the current rate. I would say that that probably applies over near the hospital. If you actually go around the immediate neighborhood on East Church Street where the clinic is now, the rates are more in the neighborhood of 50 cents a foot, which would work out to $1,750 a foot. That's 3,500 square feet. I probably went into more detail than some of you might want to look at, but I'll give you an example of what happens across the highway near the hospital. If you go to a dollar, there's some space there that's being offered at $1.38 a foot, and by the time you work through the deal, where the landlord's giving $40 a foot build out, paying a commission, you actually get down to a net of 84 cents a foot, excuse me. Anyway, the bottom line is that we are asking the Court to reconsider, possibly there's a way for us to sit down and negotiate this with the county to a rate that's more economically viable for the clinic. $4,900 just, it just won't work. At the bottom, to cut to the quick, I'm just giving you some pretty good reasons, I think, to consider renewing the lease. Over the last three years, the clinic spent $20,000 repairing and maintaining the space, has paid about $12,000 in taxes. The clinic is happy to take the space and continue as is, so you have no build out, remodeling, no brokers involved. If we were to reach a meeting of minds, and the space is vacated, I'd suggest to the Court that it's probably going to sit empty for a while, and that would affect the overall analysis. If you go back 30 years, Charlene Smith opened there in 1988, and if you take what we know would be basically an industry standard of 3%, and some people would argue 2% a year, if you were to increase from 30 years ago to today at 3% a year, you'd get to $2,133 a month. In the end, our request is to see if there is a way to sit down with someone designated and negotiate this. Charlene, the clinic does not want to move. Having said that, $4,900 is pretty fatal economically.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we too did our due diligence. Downtown, the going rate, and that's from our local people, downtown, the going rate is 50 to 75 cents per square foot. That is correct. Plus, taxes and insurance prorated out. The highway frontage is usually more than 1.25, closer to 1.50, plus the taxes and insurance, and that's assuming that they have good parking, which is what we have over there. Right now, with Man Eye Center, the county basically does the maintenance on it. We do not do any renewals or changes, modifications, and actually, we are supposed to receive any sketches or any changes that they do. So, the current proposal that we already approved was at $1.40 a square foot excluding taxes and insurance. The property taxes, should that, should that property go on, are estimated at, right at $6,400 a year for the county portion. The insurance on the building that the county pays for is $3,400 a year. So, the long-term lease at 3,500 square feet, with those, given those numbers, at $1.40 does come out $4,900. However, if we were to take the lower portion of that at 1.25, which is not where we at, with taxes and insurance, it would come out to right about $5,000 a month. So, basically, if you prorated out the taxes, prorated out the insurance, then Commissioner Willis's recommendation was not far off the mark. What he's suggesting is that we do 50 cents a square foot, which comes out to $1,750 a month, or $21,000 a year, as opposed to the 58,000. So, basically, the loss to the county would be $37,000 a year, which would basically be a subsidy to private for-profit business. Center for Sight, at this point in time, pays just in property taxes over $20,000, and the county portion from those property taxes is $6,700. Dr. Watson pays in property taxes $9,200, and the county portion is $2,900. Basically, because Man Eye Center is in a county building, they don't have to pay property taxes, because it's our building. And then we are paying the insurance on that building at this time. So, actually, if you prorate out county property taxes, the insurance, then we're not far off the mark in terms of the amount of money that we're requesting. Now, to go back to, excuse me, to go back to the 30 years ago, this is what has changed in terms of 30 years ago. 30 years ago, there was no service. And Charlene Smith provided a unique service to the residents of this county. And so at that point in time, that service was in fact allowed to go in at a lower rate because there was, there were no eye doctors. There was no, none of that service available. But now, we do. Now, Man Eye Center has competitors that are also residents and property taxpayers. And they also compete to some degree, not to the full extent, with Dr. Watson, who's also now in the area. So that gives you some history on how the original, 1988, why the rate was so reduced at that time. Because the rate for, that was established for Charlene Smith, was the same rate that was offered to the Department of Health and Human Services, to other state agencies that provided an essential service to the residents of this county. Now, if the court wishes to reconsider the $1.40, then that is certainly up to the court members.
What I'd like to do, if the court would permit me, I'd like to sit down with him next week and see if we can come up with something that would be agreeable to us and to them, and then bring it back to the court to vote on at the next meeting.
What was the offer?
The offer was 50 cents a square foot. From a $1.40.
I've seen it, but I'm just trying to think. From a $1.40 to 50?
Yes, sir.
TAC, what he's saying is that there's room between the two figures. But they're surely not going to pay the $1.50. That end of town is not growing like the hospital district is. It's going to have to have a discount of some figure.
Well, we actually do have people that are interested in that building.
So I'd make a motion that we just tabled anything on this until the next meeting. And I'll sit down with him and see, and maybe we don't do anything, but just hold it like it is. But it would, we'd need to see if we can keep the same tenant there. They've been a good tenant for a long time.
Okay, but I'm back to subsidizing private businesses. If the court wishes for you to sit down and renegotiate, then that's fine. I guess we better be prepared for everyone to want to renegotiate, but...
Well, let's just leave out the renegotiate. Let's just table this to the next meeting.
That'll be fine.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, Commissioner Willis.
Several.
Second Commissioner Overstreet, any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion to table. Okay, now, item number 13. Discussion and any necessary action regarding the 2019 employee benefits.
Hello, madam.
Hi, I'm Lori Floyd. I'm your employee benefits consultant, and there has been some discussion about changing your health plan. So I've offered a couple of different alternatives to you guys. And I'm here to talk about those. There are several different options of keeping your current plan at that grandfather status and then moving away from that grandfather status. There was an option of moving from, y'all are currently sitting at a $340 deductible. So the first option would move you to a $500 deductible. Then the second one would go up from there at the $750. And then, of course, we offered an alternate at $1,000. So it's up to the court. I'm here to answer questions. I don't know how much in detail you want.
Option one's what we currently have now.
No, sir. Option one is your renewal rates. I don't know if y'all are looking at the same document that I am or not, but your renewal rates would keep your current plan at what you have now. Option one is providing you the first, the next step of the non-grandfathered plan. So the first non-grandfathered plan that would see some savings.
At this, at this point, there's some advantages to us moving to non-grandfathered because it opens up some of the services that were not been available, that were not available to our employees if we remained grandfathered.
Correct.
One of the complaints, Lori, that we heard during all this market survey analysis was the cost to the employee for insuring their family and their entire family, not just their spouse. And so that is one of the things that the court members need to look at. If you look at an employee and family, then on option one, basically, that's going to cost the employee about $1,000 a month. A little over $1,000 a month to insure their family. Option two, it goes down to $974 a month. So if you follow through there, then you can see, of course, you have changes in deductibles and you have changes in...
Yeah.
Now, it is interesting...
80/60?
Yes, sir. It is interesting to note that the office visit amount actually goes down from $35, from $30 to $25 when we non-grandfather.
I would like to point out that 80/60, that's in-network and out-of-network.
Yeah, I know what it is, believe me.
Okay, I was just making sure.
Now, they would all go 80/60.
But our current plan is 90...
90/70.
90/70.
But we don't have the services that we have under our current plan.
So one of the main things, if I can say, of moving from a grandfather to non-grandfathered is all of your preventative is covered at 100%. So as opposed where they're going right now, paying copays and things of that nature, if you just have a member that's utilizing the plan just for their checkup once a year, they just go to the doctor for that, they don't use anything else, they would actually see a savings because they're no longer even going to have to pay a copay.
But you're only going to pay 80% of their medical bills until the 90?
Correct. They would be responsible for that 20% after they reach that deductible. And those deductibles would go up as well. But regular, you know, checkups, going to the doctor, sinus infection, those kinds of things, those are all still covered at that copay.
And so any well-baby checks?
Covered at 100%.
Well-woman care, you see what I'm saying, they don't have to pay for?
Eye exams.
Everything that's preventive medicine with option one, one, two, or three, actually. With option one, they would not have to pay for. There's no out-of-pocket at that point in time.
Correct. Your current plan that you're on, the grandfathered plan, is the max amount of changes you can make to keep that grandfathered status. So we have to go back to 2010 when the Affordable Care Act was implemented, and we looked at what those rates were, what y'all's plan design was. And the max that y'all can make is what your current plan is. So if you're looking to make any other plan changes, your next step is option one. You can always keep it at what you have, and just knowing that you cannot make any other plan changes, that your renewal rates are what the rates are. But making plan changes kind of adjusts that cost shifting of your monthly contribution.
It's advantageous to our employees to go ahead and move to a non-grandfathered because then they can, they have savings on the front end. They don't have to pay for regular checkups or regular visits to the doctor.
And they'll see that reduction in their monthly contribution if they cover their family.
Your kids leaving?
Kids on my plan, but I have employees that have kids on the plan. That would benefit them.
That would benefit them.
Because then if they're taking their children to get their regular checkups, their immunization, things of that nature, they won't be paying even a copay for that.
You mentioned vision with this option one?
Vision, excuse me, a vision, a preventative eye exam is covered at 100% on your medical plan.
Under, under, under ours now?
Under yours now, you would have to pay a copay for that.
Copay.
Yeah, so it still covers a preventative exam, you're just paying a copay. And then under the grandfathered plan...
Wasn't aware of that.
No copay.
But under option one, they wouldn't have to pay anything. The issue is that we really do have to get out from the grandfathered because our employees would receive more benefits by going ahead and non-grandfathering. That would actually save them money. Because there's some, with us being grandfathered, we can't add or change things in our plan. But if we non-grandfather, then we can make changes or modifications in our plan.
Didn't we go under the grandfather clause because of something about federal law? We were worried about something, what was that?
We were concerned about the Cadillac tax and with the Obamacare. And so basically, we wanted to stay grandfathered until we could get a look at what it looked like on the other end. Now, there have been some extensions in terms of the Obamacare Cadillac tax. And I think now it's at 2022.
And they're proposing to move it to 2025. So it's one of those things that keeps getting so long.
It keeps moving.
And if you ask our director, he'll tell you that it just has to be in there for the numbers, and he doesn't see that it'll ever get to 25, but you never know, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Basically, to, and correct me if this is wrong, Lori. Basically, if we want to optimize our options, right? And get the most service for our dollar, for our employees, for our employees to benefit the most, then your recommendation, then of course, after that, it depends on deductibles, on how we want to view the deductibles and the cost. So basically, non-grandfathering is the recommendation now from TAC in terms of how to move forward.
I would agree with that, yes. It just, under your grandfathered plan, you're limited. Y'all are maxed out. This is the most y'all can do. You cannot make any plan changes. Like you're, you're there, you're maxed out. So if you want to make any of those plan changes, then you would have to move to that grandfathered plan. And there are more benefits, in my opinion, of a non-grandfathered plan for the employees.
What kind do y'all have?
Under TAC, we're still grandfathered. But I come from, my previous employment, I was in a non-grandfathered plan. And personally, I see a difference in my insurance because I'm in a, I'm in a grandfathered plan now. And previously, I was in a non-grandfathered plan. And I really liked not having to pay copays. But I don't, I don't have medical issues, so I just went for my checkups every year. So I never had to pay anything, and now I do.
What do you have to pay, the $30 copay?
Yes. It's a small amount, it is, but it makes a difference if you're taking kids.
I understand that.
Yeah, if you, if you have small children and you're having to take them in, you know, for six-week checkups, and then a three-month checkup, and then a six-month checkup, then those $30 pops start adding up.
And I will add to, you know, back when Affordable Care Act came into play, nobody really knew what to expect. And I know TAC was a big component of hold on to your grandfather status as long as you can because we don't know. Now, here we are, you know, many years later. And we do know that it's not as scary and there's not other things that we weren't anticipating. So I can say it's not as scary as we originally thought.
Adrena, what do you think?
What do I think?
Yeah.
I think we need to make the adjustment and change to non-grandfathered benefit our employees.
And once we leave the grandfathered status, we can't go back.
Correct. The main difference in moving to that non-grandfathered, of course, is the preventative. And there's also some additional appeal rights and stuff that members have. Things are denied of that nature. But knowing that there are, because your plan is paying for those preventative, per se, that's why there's that huge difference. A lot of people are nervous because there's that initial, initial cost upfront. And that's why making a higher plan change to get, so if you took your same plan, you would see a cost increase. So if you took your same current grandfathered plan, moved that same plan to non-grandfathered, there would be a cost increase to cover those additional things that your plans are paying. So that's a big misconception, too. That's why, in order for you to see those savings, you would have to increase your plan. So increase your deductible, your coinsurance percentage and the things of that nature.
But if we go with, if we go with option one versus our plan now is major medical, I'm not talking about office visits and things like that, it's going to be more out-of-pocket money to the employee?
Correct.
On major medical?
Yeah, your deductible would increase from 340 to 500.
It would increase by $160.
And then, of course, the percentage would increase from 10% to 20% on their part.
And their coins, their copay?
Their copay would go down to $5.
No, that's, that's not, no, that's not the big issue. The big issue is all your preventive medicine for those people that have children and for, for everybody that has to go for checkups once a year. They're not paying anything. They're paying zero. Everything that's preventive medicine.
And then you're seeing the monthly contributions go down. So if you don't have any medical issues, you're saving money in the front end.
But if you do, then you pay additional 10%.
Plus the deductible.
Yes.
Paying additional 10% for what?
On your deductible. If you look at the...
It's going from 90/70 to 80/60.
But your deductible is increased by $160 a year.
$500 deductible from 340.
Instead of 340. So it's, your deductible goes up $160 a year.
Yeah, and you get less coverage.
You're getting less coverage on one side, but you're getting more coverage on the other end. Every, every female in here is supposed to go once a year and get a well-woman check. Okay, let me tell you, it doesn't cost you $30. And if that's the year that they're going to do blood testing and mammograms and everything else, then you just forked over 300, 350? You just got metered deductible just with that. And so having that be free changes things.
I just want to be sure that we don't mess up what we have for our employees.
No, sir, we will be actually improving our services to our...
That's my question to y'all.
It's one of our only drawing cards.
Exactly.
That's it.
Yes, no, sir. We would, we would be improving our services.
Except for the deductible.
Yes, sir.
I'd come up with 500 instead of 340.
Yes, sir.
That's on the front side. You lose 10% on the backside.
On the front side, you don't know how much you gain because it's going to depend on that employee and their family.
If they have a major medical issue.
If they make a make...
I said if they have a major medical issue, you lose 10%.
Then that's where they'll lose 10%. The savings, the savings are on the front end.
So we have to decide if we want it on the front end or the back end.
Well, with younger families or people that have...
They're going to want it on the front end.
That's right.
Somebody my age is going to want it on the back end. Okay, so I'll look at it a little different, too. I'm at that age. I just went through an event, so I understand all that.
I think that the benefits to our employees, based on what Lori has said, is that the benefits overall to our employees are improved by going with option one.
Well, option one in my book here is the grandfathered deal.
No, sir, that's your renewal rate.
90/60, you want option one, it's 90/70. Well, I'm looking at it...
On the review, it says option one.
Option one, non-grandfathered?
But if you look in the packet.
Look in your packet. No.
Yeah, we do find that. I'm looking at what's... Yeah, that's what I'm looking at here because that is, option one is 90/70.
Right. And if, okay, so in the review, option one is the current rate, and option two is grandfathered.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. So your option two is my option two.
Go to your packet and look at the plan proposal that was sent to you by Adrena.
So you're talking about option two?
Yes, I guess.
We're talking about option two here.
So option two, yes, look at option two, your non-grandfathered. Okay, look at option two, your non-grandfathered. No wonder we're talking... Okay, look at option two, your non-grandfathered, no wonder we're talking about...
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm assuming you're saying.
Option one would be your current plan.
Okay.
Look at this, yeah. Just go by...
Just go down on your agenda review, option two.
Now, back in the book, that's a bit revised.
It's right behind the menu, it's a...
Your, your current renewal that y'all received from us was a 2.8% increase in your rates. So, going with that first non-grandfathered plan would be a 2.53% decrease in your monthly contributions, if that helps.
Stephanie, would you do me a huge favor? Would you want to make a copy of this, which is just a copy of what Lori sent us? Just make one for everybody, thank you, ma'am. So, with option one, the copay will decrease by $5. The prescription coverage change will decrease $5.
You're going option one on page, on page seven, or option one somewhere else?
Page seven, option number two, your non-grandfathered.
Number two.
Option number two on page seven of your agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Now, give me my scribble one.
Basically, copay is five bucks difference in the current plan. Your emergency hospital's going up from 100 to 150.
No, sir, no, sir, option number one.
One, one, five, but it's 100, it's still 100.
Option number one is the same emergency room hospital. There's no change on option number one of the sheet we just gave you. Everybody just go to the sheet we just gave you.
Is it?
Okay, on option number one, okay, your office visit goes down, it's $25. Your emergency room hospital stays the same on option number one. The difference is that on option number one, you can offer some other things to the employees that we cannot offer on our grandfathered, because it's frozen in place, basically.
So, what are those besides the vision?
Just preventative exams are covered at 100%, and some appeal things are covered, but they didn't, they don't have it now under their current plan.
Why is TAC going with number one but pushing this other? When they're putting it out there, I mean, you said...
TAC's not pushing, they haven't, they haven't reached...
They haven't, they haven't, y'all, you, you said a while ago, y'all basically have the same insurance we have right now.
No, sir, I just said our plan is currently grandfathered.
It's grandfathered like ours. Ours is grandfathered.
But they don't, they don't have the same.
Okay.
That's above me, I don't...
Yeah.
Okay.
My recommendation for option one is just if y'all want to make any plan changes. If you don't, you want to keep your current plan, that's completely fine with us either way.
As far as these is, 80/60. I mean, there's some good...
The preventive, the preventive medicine in, in option number one is big. I mean, I know you're on the other end. Oh, that's, that's just where I wrote the difference. You have on it some of my handwriting, and that's at the employee only, is it 87856? Employee and family, is it $1,889.64? Right, so that's just the difference. And I just wrote that out, because since some of our employees, that was one of the concerns, was that if they're going to have to pay, you know, if you look over here, if they're going to have to pay well over $1,000 for their family, then that was a concern for some of our employees, was that insurance rates kept, kept going up pretty drastically for the employee if they were trying to cover their spouse and/or their family. So, you can see that the rate, what the renewal rate does. We need to go ahead and non-grandfather simply so that we can provide our, our employees with better insurance. That's, that's what it boils down to.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion, Commissioner Willis.
Go with option one.
You're going to go with option one or two? Okay, option one. Commissioner Willis, second, Commissioner Overstreet, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lori, we do appreciate it. Okay, shall we take a short break before we go into the workshop? Okay, what time is it, ma'am?
11:51.
Okay, 11:51, let's adjourn until 12.